We will call to order the Cumberland County Salary Board, a Board of Commissioners meeting. And we'll begin with a roll call, please, for the Salary Board. Does right.
Commissioner Niedera?
I am here.
Commissioner Fashi?
I'm here.
Commissioner Eichelberger?
Present.
Control Wickham?
Here.
There is a, uh, we are at the point in the agenda where we open it up to public comments related to any items on the Salary Board or in general. If there's anyone in the room, I do not believe we have anyone in the room for public comment at this time. Is there anyone showing online? If you're online and you'd like to make a comment, please use the raise your hand feature.
No requests.
No requests. All right. We'll move into the approval of the minutes of the October 23rd meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 23rd.
A second, thank you. It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Okay. We'll move on into the approval of the Salary Board actions.
I'll make a motion to approve the Salary Board actions except for the court.
Okay.
A second. It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 We'll turn that over then to the courts.
I make a motion to approve the Salary Board actions regarding the courts.
Second motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Okay, we will move on. Is there any other business to come before the Salary Board at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
You're adjourned?
Thank you. Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you. We will go into the Board of Commissioners meeting and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we will call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting and begin with a roll call.
Commissioner Niedera?
I am here.
Commissioner Fashi?
I'm here.
Commissioner Eichelberger?
Again, we'll open it up to any public comment on non-agenda items. And if you are online, please use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to make a public comment.
No requests online.
None, none online. All right, we'll move forward and that takes us to the Consent Agenda.
Thank you.
The Consent Agenda is a list of routine items that do not appear to be controversial in nature, nor do they appear to require any additional discussion. If anybody requests discussion on any of the items, numbers four through 13, now would be the time to make that request. Hearing none, seeing none, Commissioners have a request of approval of the Consent Agenda.
To approve?
Sure.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners. That then takes us to the regular agenda. The regular agenda is a list of non-routine items that will be discussed and may be acted upon individually. We'll start with Agenda Items 14 and 15. We've got Gary Lanker joining us to discuss two letters of support.
Yes, good morning Commissioners and thank you for the opportunity to be before you and update you on our exciting and affordable housing project known as Latort Losts and Latort Townhomes. We are partnering with Loa de Cooper, the same developer that we worked with on the Normandy Losts, Shippensburg project here in Cumberland County. We're very excited about this project because not only does it provide for 48 units of affordable rental housing, but in addition, on the site, will provide eight units of homeownership, which our organization will be, will be handling. So we are before you with the request for letters of support on two major funding sources that we are seeking. The State Gaming Share, or LSA, which application was sponsored by Cumberland County Housing and Development Authority, Mary Turner and her group. And then the second is a RCAP or RACP application that actually Katic has sponsored, and that we're seeking support for each, for $1 million. So the budget, hopefully you did receive the snapshot update. We do have a little over $2.9 million budget for the homeownership aspect. To date, we have raised nearly $900,000. We received a $600,000 fair grant that you all has provided a letter of support for. And we have close to $300,000 of DCD-NAP funding. That's the funding that our banking partners provided, and we're anxious and hopeful to get that. So we're on our way, but we do need these two significant funding sources. Your letters would go to both Senator Rothman and Representative Blythe. Do you go on record? They are supportive of this project, but for you all to go on record. And then secondly, to the Secretary of the Budget, who oversees the RACP or RCAP funding. Any questions?
Gary, did you receive approval from PHFA for the project today? Or had, did I see some?
Yes, that, that's, that's why we're here. Because if Loa de Cooper would not have got the approval of the low-income housing tax credits to do the affordable rental, we wouldn't be able to proceed with our aspect. Because it all encompassed one site, and of course, that site they have under agreement with Katic.
And can you just, I mean, we're very excited to have more units potentially coming online in Cumberland County in general, but the timeline you're looking at?
Yes, we would anticipate breaking ground by late summer, early fall of '26. That would be our timeline. And just to refresh your memory, we are the certified, you could certify us as a CHODA, Community Housing Development Organization, for the Normandy Losts project. We will be back to you at some time in the next six months for a similar request for the Latort Losts project. You would be concerned as they should for that. That does permit us to access some operating funds through Department of Community Economic Development. So that's very important for our organization that, that name.
And Gary, the Normandy Losts project was really very attractive. I know Commissioner Fashi and I were out when you did the ribbon cutting. Is it full?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Did anyone have any questions, Gary?
No.
Okay. We have two items then.
So I will move to approve the letter of support for Tri-County Housing's Latort Townhomes.
Oh, sorry.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 And then we can do the second one?
Yeah, and we'll do the second.
The second we have for you. As I said, we have served over 800 folks in that tenure, and we usually can get between 20 and 30 that attend that one month Saturday. So this funding, although we do get support from PHFA and Big Ten Bank is our major sponsor, this is very important. This fair funding to assist in our operations of the program.
Gary, I participated in that education, education back in the day, and a Saturday class is really valuable. So for folks that work, it's very challenging to.
When we embarked on that, you know, we felt that that would be the way to go, and we just continued with that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I am going to move to approve.
Oh, sorry.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but you don't.
All right, that takes us into Agenda Item 16. I'll call in, Carrie, think and binder to discuss the laying of the 2026 budget on view.
Good morning. So we're requesting approval to place the 2026 budget on view. There have been no changes to the budget since our presentation on the 22nd. There's also no proposed increase to the millage rates for 2026. Total county revenue is budgeted at 270.8 million, and total county expenses are budgeted at 290.1 million. Of that, the total general fund revenue is budgeted at 109.9 million and total expenses at 126.7 million dollars. Any questions?
Carrie, just a couple of questions, because this budget is fully built on the expectation of flat funding. You know, antecdotally, we're hearing that they may be nearing a budget, hopefully in the upcoming weeks. If we should get surprises in that budget funding, can you walk me through the timeline of any adjustments we would have to make to the existing budget to be in compliance? With your timeline of posting by year end.
Um, so I don't know the dates off the top of my head, but it would be, I believe it's a 10% change in revenue or expenses. We'd have to place it on view for another 20 days. Um, we currently have it on for approval December 4th. So I believe the last meeting would be two weeks after that.
Okay.
Will be our final meeting for the year.
Okay, thank you. With that and the nine, the pending 911 funding, we're, I think we just need to really keep our eye on that in the event that would be unfortunate that we would have to make any changes to the budget regarding the funding that we can anticipate.
We need to look at the regulate the rules for a millage change, because that 10% may not apply to that. We may have to also advertise if we change or recommended millage. That's what we need to look into that, but we'll get the.
Okay. At this point, I'm just concerned about, I mean, we've built a budget projecting flat funding, and we don't know if that's going to be, in fact, what happens for Cumberland County or not. So we need to just be keeping an eye on, on that as, and try and respond within the timeline to, for us to meet our obligation. So.
I think every county in the Commonwealth is the same thing. Like, you have to have a budget done, and we have no idea what's coming from the state, and we have no idea what's coming from the federal government. So we are in a tricky position. As a follow-up to the need to possibly amend what we have now. So we, we are scheduled to vote on this on December 4th. Okay, if we have to change it, we go on view for another 20 days, which takes us to December 24th.
Well, we have to look at what threshold it is to have to place it on view again. So there is a threshold where we would have to place it on view again.
Okay.
Um, before the December 4th.
And if we get there and we are at the threshold, we have until December 31st to pass the budget. Yes, yes. Just want to make sure that that's very clear, that December 31st, that's our drop dead date. We don't have any wiggle room on it. We can't sit here and go, you know what? We're just not doing it.
You'd also have to add another public meeting, so you'd have to do all the advertisements.
Yes, yes.
And I, and I'm hopeful that we won't have to do any of this, but hope isn't an action plan. And we can't, you know, we, we just need to be very aware of the timelines involved with this if we, we receive any, you know, unfortunate surprises.
And just to note, we have a finance meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 31st, at 1:30 PM.
Okay.
Per our normal routine.
Yeah.
Schedule. So.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Okay, but thank you.
Carrie, I have a question, I guess. It's, I'm going to shift the focus a little bit from what's been asked so far is, you know, what's the, the state role in shaping our budget? I want to talk about our role in shaping our budget. So through all the conversation, you have positioned this, as we always have, that addressing the gap that we have, that will be addressed either by millage increases or reductions in the outlays. So we are now saying there will be no millage increase in this proposal. So that is saying that we, to stay on target, we have to realize all of that through cost reduction.
Or other revenue changes. So grant revenues offset our current expenses.
Okay.
Or other.
Or using our reserves or drawing down our unbalanced to cover that gap as well. So there's multiple paths.
Okay.
And we've been through those multiple paths. And yet, the Finance Department has done an excellent job of prepping this Board of Commissioners on what our options are, on what could happen, what couldn't happen, how things work, how you alter the budget, how you make sure that you're not running around with a structural deficit, how you make sure that you're not getting in deep. You have been, you have been excellent at preparing us for that. Thanks.
I like that. I appreciate the, all the things that have been presented to us as fastly as possible. So that's up to us.
Gary, you're not approving of the budget at this juncture?
Oh, no.
You're not? No, it sounds like he's in favor of a miller trading increase. I mean, that's what I heard.
That would be incorrect. Well, you hear a lot of things wrong that you love to mischaracterize.
So if we, at this juncture, there's a disapproval of the budget after we've walked through this, they've projected, and the projections are showing that we will be using $6 million potentially, projections of $6 million of the, I don't want to call it ARPA funding, but the reserve funding that has been made available because of the ARPA funding. And Gary, I'm going through the budget now line by line, and some of those items, we have accounted for full employment, when in fact, that may or not be the case. We have a $3 million contingency fund. So there are levers in addition to some of the other things that are budgeted. There are levers that we can, can, can do to get this into a budgeted, you know, and a balanced budget. We had projected last year to end the year, I believe it was a $3.2 million deficit, according to the, oh, the most recent audit, and we ended up being able to contribute $1.2 million into the reserves. And the audit really pointed out the good work that has been done to make those things happen by the excellent reporting from our finance team and actions that were taken throughout the year. So if you have solutions, I think we should discuss them, discuss them before we put a budget on view that you're opposing.
The honest response to that is a lot of those have been put on the table and discussed previously, and we're not.
I don't know what those things are, Commissioner Eichelberger. You do not voice those things when we sit down in these meetings. Sometimes you're not at. So it's very hard to have, to, to understand where you're coming from when you, it, when you say, well, we've discussed these things, or you've said these things. You have not sent them to me. I'm not aware that you've sent them to Commissioner Eichelberger. If you have had conversations elsewhere, unaware of it. But it's so easy to vote no. It's so easy to vote no, and you can vote no, and you can defend your no vote forever. But as I heard the other day in this room, voting yes is a sign of leadership. Having a conversation is a sign of leadership, and I just, it's just not here. Now's your time. Now's your time. We don't have to put the budget on view today, but we have to know what you're thinking, other than.
I've, I've offered what I'm thinking for most part two years, and it is.
To whom?
It's utterly, in this room, both publicly and privately.
I don't know what you said. So how about if you do it again? You can call me a moron for not understanding. I'm okay with that. Please, say it again.
I'll just summarize. So recall that two years ago, well, less than two years ago, when the new board came in, the question was raised here, how do we address the current situation? I did put some things on the table. They were automatically dismissed.
What were they?
There were a number. The one was the phase in of the salary increases. There was a hiring of, hiring freeze except for cases of emergency. By the way, which Dauphin County is doing right now, even though, but it was waved off and said, totally unworkable, can't work. So you know, looking at some of the large, single budget line items that were discretionary, including farmland preservation, and making an adjustment there. The idea, of course.
Let's have that conversation now.
Well, I've been waiting two years for that conversation, because you keep saying that you won't do that.
They presented the farmland preservation, and nothing was said. You said nothing. They presented, we all walked away, and it is in the budget at 8:50, correct?
That's not accurate, so.
No, you, we didn't. We, we had a presentation, and I, Jean, I can tell you what Gary said. He wanted to use the nursing home proceeds to, you know, to pluck the $20 million gap. He wanted to, he did not want to stop the employee bonuses that cost the county a ton of money. He wanted to, he wanted to not give, it wasn't a hiring freeze that he had suggested.
It was.
It was, it was, it, well, it's in the Senate. So there, there were a number of things that he, that he presented. He wanted to hold, hold salaries when there weren't salary increases going until August, which he apparently was not aware of. So it's very frustrating. I agree with you. It's very frustrating for us to get to this point. We have had multiple meetings, and nothing has been brought to the table. Carrie, I apologize, but we're not going to be able to vote on this budget today. We will have to regroup, and I want Commissioner Eichelberger to detail to us where he is saving $4 million, because I believe we can get that $6 million numbered down. And that is coming from funding that was originally intended to supplant needs when this pandemic began. Luckily, through the good actions of Commissioner Fashi and I, we have been able to retain that. I want to continue to retain those in reserves as much as possible, and that's the goal. That's what I'm focused on, and I need you to come to the table and tell me where you're going to come up with.
You cannot come to a process like this, two years in, at the 11th plus hour, and all of a sudden say, well, this is what we have decided as two Commissioners, and if you're not on board, you need to provide.
You voted no to the tax increase. You voted no to the tax increase. If we had not done that, we were projected a $20 million deficit. If we had not done that, Gary, we would not be able to weather this impasse that we have right now. We would be having to terminate employees. We would have to be ceasing service. We would have to be doing a whole lot of really drastic things. We were able to fiscally get this budget in a much better place. Are we where we need to be? Absolutely not. Because we still keep seeing rising costs. We still keep seeing declining revenues potentially from the state or flat, which is challenging. So unless you're going to come to the table with real actions, instead of theories and pointing fingers and laying blame, I don't want to have this conversation.
I did want to have the conversation, but I want the conversation to be public. It's really important for people of Cumberland County to understand what's going on here. And the only way to do it now is in a public forum, because we have our information sessions with finance. Commissioner Niedera, Commissioner Eichelberger, every month, we sit down with them. Every month, they deliver financials to us. Every month. You have the option of going through those materials or not going through those materials. Clearly, Commissioner Eichelberger, you have the option of coming to the meetings or not coming to the meetings. You also have the option of talking with your colleagues. Again, I'm going to say it. I don't hear anything from you. If you are having conversations behind the scenes with finance, with your ideas, they're not making it to me. If you are having conversations with our chief clerk behind the scenes, they are not making it to me. And it is because, if you are doing that, it is not their job to deliver that information to the, to your two colleagues. It's your job. It's your job. So I'm, this has to happen in a public meeting from now on. What do you want? You don't approve this budget? What do you approve of?
This is very interesting, because this doesn't reflect at all what you say in private.
I, you don't know what I say in private, Mr. Eichelberger, because we don't speak.
Information session that take place instead of public deliberation.
You don't come.
I missed one because I was on a C cap.
Commissioner Eichelberger, you don't come to work. You don't.
I care more than you are.
Oh, you are full of it. Gary, let's stay right here with what's going on.
Given the toxic work environment you've created, yes, I do work from home quite a bit.
I see. You just, you just, you just said, I come to work, and then you just said, no, I don't.
I do come to work.
Both sides of your mouth. Let's talk about the budget. Let's stay on task.
Very good. Wow, it took you that long to get around the budget. So instead of just vilifying people. So, okay, you know, I'll, I'll tell you some of the notes I put down. I have to ask the question related to a number of things that have been brought to this board, going back to what I asked Carrie. So yes, there have been options put on here constantly, millage increase, spending reduction, millage increase, spending reduction, have to.
You're letting out grant income and additional income, because that's been on the table as well.
It has been on the table. It has always been on the table. So, as well as spending reductions. So we are facing a somewhat unique situation over the last few years. But here's, here's the points I'm going to go. The first question I have, which I, I've asked Dana for clarification, and I'm not dragging her into this unless she wants to. But so as an example, if you have a budget, you have to follow your budget. So we were told just a couple of weeks ago that there have been seven unbudgeted positions added to the District Attorney's Office this year. Five unbudgeted positions added to criminal justice. And I don't even know what the other departments are. So the question is, you can have a budget on paper that looks wonderful and makes great promises, but if we're not going to follow our budget, why have a budget? Okay, I have no confidence that there's going to be more than lip service paid to the types of reductions we're talking about. More specifically, I think the budget document that we now have, and only this week we're told, no, we're not going to do millage increase, because that sure seemed to be the way it was heading. But this is.
Get that on the table. Get it on the table.
This is a buy now, pay later budget that hopes everything, that hopes everything works out later. And I will tell you, the three assumptions build into this budget that I think are going to be significant. There is an assumption of significant savings that will appear as a result of hiring new finance director, and I hope we get savings out of that. He's a bright young man. But the idea that there will be substantial savings there, I think is unrealistic. It assumes there will be substantial and painless, painless cost reductions as a result of this exercise now underway that's being called strategic planning, despite repeated Commissioner indications, even within the last few weeks, that the county needs to spend more now to save money later. Number three, as reported in the Senate, just.
I'm sorry, what was number two? I, I heard you say one. I didn't.
Painless cost reductions that would result from the so-called strategic planning exercise. Okay. Number three is the anticipation of a gusher of new revenue from proposed data centers located in the county. Anticipating that's going to occur sooner than what's likely to occur, if it occurs at all. So, and as I said, that was, that was stated in the trial settlement in Cumberland. So I think the, the fact that this planning initiative, about third silver bullet initiative of this board, says a lot in itself, because it is, it is the third effort to, the term being used has been to right-size the revenues to the county's obligations. So that puts the onus on us for discussion of what are the county's obligations. I am hopeful that the planning exercise gives us some insight into that. However, as I've stated, that exercise, I think, is, is very dangerous. Flaws on it that went into a predisposition. So I think the, the fact that we have stated repeatedly, rein, spending, rein, spending, rein, spending, but every Friday, we publish a long list of, we're hiring Cumberland County, and pushing it out there. And doing that in the face of department heads who are being told, country paper clips, don't go to any conferences, don't get any training. And I think those things are contradictory and undermine our effort to, to expect departments to really help significantly. Some of our departments do. Public Safety came up with some big savings this year, and that's not a new thing. We always budget conservatively for essentially what is worst-case scenario, and then we use those numbers to essentially know what the impact our budgets have been.
Okay, Gary, you finished. Charlie, you'll receive, I'm sure, and Joe Cress, if you're watching, you'll receive his written statement, because he's clearly prepared for this at this time. You know, that, that's the way he rolls. He doesn't talk to Commissioner Fashi or I about this. He would prefer to make this pre-written statement. And I'm going to make my pre-written statement that.
I've tried. That's why I gave. I went to the three meetings of the strategic planning, and when I said, you know what? This survey instrument has too much bias, something I am very familiar with.
Don't talk to me about that, Gary. You had your opportunity. You had your opportunity. You will.
Process.
Everything's a flawed process.
Yeah.
You, you want to build, build processes and an, and analysis and all of this stuff.
No, I simply want to make decisions on facts.
You could not.
When it comes to decisions based on facts.
You don't even understand the facts. That's the sad part of all of this.
Really?
So I will go back to walking into a twenty million dollar deficit. You said you were going to open the budget before I was seated on this board. We got here and Commissioner Fashi and I had to open the budget to take action and you wouldn't.
And your action was, we are not going to.
I let you speak. It is my turn now.
Go ahead.
We have now gotten that deficit down to what we're projecting at six million dollars. There has been a ton of work done. You defer capital in capital important efforts. We had to replace the system for tax assessment. That was twenty years old and never updated. We're replacing Lawson. That was, that is old and lacked updates. We've had to make significant capital investments all across. Those systems were in place, you deferred. You kicked the can down the road. We had that in spite of it. You strapped me with a thirty million dollar bond obligation as well. That added two more million dollars worth of debt service every year. Because the P twenty-five project went on for ten years. No, you keep updating the costs. We can't even account for the costs. I have no idea how much time and money was spent over the ten years. And you did not seek funding to assist with that. So, and we are now, we have, we have grants coming before us today. And I appreciate that that is something that is being chipped at. We will look at positions, but we cannot avoid hiring for public safety, for the prison, for children and youth as much as you may want to. So Gary, we have come a long way. You can continue to try and spin your narrative that you're the bastion of holding up good accountability when you change your mind and quite frankly are untruthful in the process, time and time again.
I'm reading this into the record. And I have a stack of them. But you wanted, you want to say to me that you tried to work with me. This is A, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four email. Addressed to me. These words are directed to me. There are one, two, three, four, five people copied on this. Blah, blah, blah. This is from Gary Eichelberger. Just like your personality test warned us, shallow, spiteful, manipulative opportunist. They just use slightly more polite words. I would add serial hypocrisy practitioner and hyper partisan double standard apologist. You lucked out catching the wave of Republican ethical self-destruction to help you along. It won't last forever. I am not even reading your shit anymore. You live in an alternate, you, an alternate universe. Keep making it up and, and accusing others of doing what you are doing. Have fun defending the disaster you have created. You dragged DeFilippo down and out, and you are now dragging his replacement down too. That's just the first paragraph. It is, I don't know how to work with you. When any comment made to you, that's what is delivered.
That comment is in response to a lot of comments from you.
I have all of them. I have the stack.
No doubt, no doubt.
This is, this is what it's like.
This is what we have been reduced to.
Commissioner Fashi's chance.
Don't oppose what we.
Oh, I don't, I, I've said it all. It's impossible to deal with you in a constructive way. I find it impossible. In any other work environment, I would have a case against you. But as an elected official, I don't. Because I, as a public servant, as an elected person, this is what I deal with. This is what every elected official has to deal with. Because as a public elected official, I've put myself out there to be subjected to this. It does not make for a good working environment here.
Just a token.
I want to talk about the budget. That's what I wanted to talk about. And it, it deranged into nonsense.
So.
Okay, we've had enough. I'm gonna, I'm gonna cease.
Of course, now she's.
Gary, you had your chance. Jean had her chance. This budget, we are not, we're, do we table it, Keith? We're gonna have to.
This makes my case.
Yeah, well.
I can't say, I can't offer a word without these two.
No, the fact is, we are going to table this item. If we can, I want in writing to Commissioner Fashi and I and to the finance team where you are saving money. So I want to see that, and I think we deserve to see, we don't need to table it.
Table as a possible motion.
Okay, it's possible. We are not going to take a motion on this today. Thank you, Carrie. I apologize to you and your team for all of the hard work and effort and the repeated sessions we had discussing this that are now being just passed aside. So we will wait for Commissioner Eichelberger to send to you all and to us his remedies for the budget. So, and we will move on right now. Thank you.
And you know, Solicitor Brenneman, while we're having this conversation, because we're clearly not going to be able to get this. What happens if we get to January one and we don't have a budget? I don't need an answer right now, but I would like to know the answer to that. Thank you. Because it sure looks like it's coming to that.
But one of you two is.
Excuse me, Gary, you're out of line.
Fine.
Still my right to go. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, commissioners, uh, the finance team. And I will get all of the dates necessary by then to, you know, we'll develop a plan for the path forward.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us then to agenda item seventeen. And, uh, we have James Dittman available on Zoom to discuss, uh, the acceptance of several donations. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, the Department of Public Safety is asking for the Board of Commissioners' approval to accept sponsorship money to be used in offsetting the expenses related to the LEPC summit, which was held back in October. Uh, for those that don't know, the summit's a one-day conference that brings together businesses, facilities, safety personnel, emergency management, first responders, local state government and more for educational presentations on emergency preparedness and safety. The planning committee received payments from AT&amp;T FirstNet, Members First Federal Credit Union, and Wegmans Food Markets in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars each for bronze sponsorship levels. The approval of these three sponsors brings the final number to twenty-three with total sponsorship funds of eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The LEPC is very thankful for the support that these agencies give to the mission. Again, we ask for your approval to accept the money to be applied towards the summit expenses. Thank you.
Questions for James?
No, thank you, James. Commissioner Fashi and I both attended and thought it was a very well-run event. And I love seeing the interaction that happens amongst the folks there. And I think the teamwork, uh, amongst the first responders is really fantastic. So thank you for taking the effort, making it all happen.
Absolutely, thank you.
I move to approve.
Awesome.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, James. Thank you, commissioners. That takes us then to agenda item eighteen, which is, uh, discussion of a bid results and a motion to select. Um, we've got Kirk Stoner joining us to walk us through. Thank you. Hello, Kirk.
Hey, good morning, everyone. It's a bid we put out for repairs to Hertzler Bridge. As you may recall, it bridges now closed due to damage that was found during our routine inspection process. Uh, we only have one bidder on this, uh, Kinsley Construction at one sixty-nine, one sixty-eight. So we're, uh, we, we did some research, we had HRG do some research. We believe that, uh, other bidders had other business going on. It's a little bit of specialized work, which contributed to a single bid, but the bid, uh, is appropriate. We had HRG review it and are recommending, uh, award to Kinsley. And as you can see by the wording of the agenda, to have all the approvals built into your approval now so we can keep the project moving forward.
Any questions?
I do not. Someone like to make a motion or no questions?
Five seconds. Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Kirk. Thank you, commissioners. That takes us then off to Kirk Stoner yet again, uh, to discuss a possible motion to authorize the execution of a temporary easement.
Sure, commissioners, as you're aware, the Bishop Bridge removal project is currently out the bid. Bids will be received November twentieth. As part of the project, we need temporary construction easements from a surrounding property owner. Uh, the easement's, uh, total only nine hundred and four square feet. We've met with the property owner on site, reviewed the documents, and the property owner has signed off on those documents. Looking for your execution so we can continue forward with the project after bids are received.
Any questions?
Thank you, Kirk. I entertain a motion. Someone would like to move to approve.
Turn. The seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Kirk. Thank you, commissioners. That takes us to the contracts and grants portion of the agenda, and I'll ask Angela Smizer to help with this.
Thank you, Stacy. Morning, everybody. Right, agenda item twenty is a sponsorship program grant acceptance for the commissioner's office, and I'll call on Katie Merman to discuss, and Katie has the next several items for us.
Okay. All right, good morning. So our first item is, uh, asking your permission to accept Katie's, uh, three thousand dollar sponsorship towards the county celebration of America two fifteen PA.
Very good. Someone like to make a motion on that?
Move to approve.
Sure.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Can I just keep going?
Yeah, okay, roll.
All right, so our next one is a two thousand dollar grant acceptance for County Criminal Justice Advisory Board Technical Assistance and Training Grant. This will provide funding for sixteen members to attend PCCV's CJAB Conference in twenty twenty-six.
Okay, I move to approve.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, and then our next couple are together. So I'll explain the project and then ask questions, and then we can go through the list. Uh, so this is our annual LSA statewide grant application. So we are applying for, uh, just, oh, just under six, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to rehabilitate the historic courthouse. Uh, projects include repairing the brownstone out front. So that temporary fix just went in this week. This would give us money to permanently fix, uh, the full, the full brownstone. Uh, investigate the masonry to make sure nothing else is going on that we need to worry about and fix. Uh, uh, repair and paint the clock and the cupola. And then inside, we would be able to repair the plaster in the ceiling of the historic courtroom, which now that they've done the, uh, chimney breath feels confident that that's a good investment of our resources. And then also to update the sound system and lighting in the historic courtroom. So that will let us host more professional events and just make the meeting space more usable for a lot of county and otherwise, it's a really nice big room that it would be nice to be able to use more often for meetings. Um, as with any large grant, this is a real team effort. So I want to thank folks from facilities, IMTO and Communications, who have all worked together with me on this to make sure that we're kind of thinking through everything, um, figuring out what we really need, but not just want. Um, so before I kind of go through the i- items with this project, do you have any questions for me or, uh, any of the folks here about the project?
Do not.
Move to approve?
Okay. Okay, well.
Yes, moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 And then the next one is the resolution, uh, associated with applying for the grant.
Okay. And I will move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. All right, thank you so much, Katie. Thank you, commissioners.
Right, that takes us to agenda item twenty-four, and I'll call on Ryan Simon to discuss the contract for Greg and alcohol. Good morning, Ryan.
Uh, good morning, commissioners. Uh, Family Health Council of Central Pennsylvania, uh, provides housing, uh, services for us. And in past years, we've used two different funding sources. Uh, state opioid response money from, uh, from DDP, from the state. And then, um, reinvestment money from CAVHC. Um, unfortunately, we're not able to receive the reinvestment money from CAVHC anymore. So we're looking to reduce the contract down to just the money we're receiving from the state in SOR funds. Any questions?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Ryan. That takes us to agenda item twenty-five, and I'll call on Miranda Melton to discuss the contract for MHIDD. Good morning, Miranda.
Good morning. I have one contract for you this morning. It is for mental health. This is for Laurel Life to provide family-based services for us. It's a total contract, uh, cost of ten thousand dollars. Any questions?
Do not.
Move for approve.
I second, it's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and agenda item twenty-six is a contract for public safety, and I'll call on Bob Shackley to discuss. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. Morning, commissioners, requesting your approval of a contract with NRG Health to perform the required health and medical physicals for hazardous materials team members personnel. Uh, the contract covers physicals for eighteen of the team members over the next twelve months. It's a one-time contract, total cost of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Cost will be covered between a mix of the hazmat fees as well as, uh, some subsidy from the general fund. Any questions?
No, I move to approve.
Sure.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
And that, that concludes the contracting grant section. I'll hand it back to me.
Thank you, Angela. That takes us to agenda item twenty-seven, which is Commissioners' assignment. It's and Commissioner Maybush.
Yes, um, all of my board assignments were not, uh, happening over the last two weeks. So there was other events happening within the community though and things that I attended, so I'll update you here. Um, I did attend the hazardous, uh, household hazardous waste, the final event for the year, and learned that I am not the harbinger of bad weather for those events because it was a gorgeous day. And, um, very productive and successful as always. Justin does an amazing job getting things coordinated there, and the residents all very much appreciate that. Um, I had some meetings for my sign, uh, my position on the board of Tri-County Community Action. And the nonprofits are really scurrying to figure out how they can provide more assistance in this time of need. And that's really encouraging. And, um, on our fund development, uh, meeting with Tri-County Community Action, they indicated that they are an unusual nonprofit in that that, much of their funding comes from community development block grant funding, and that is actually still flowing. So they are not experiencing that result and very focused on trying to facilitate help for, for those that are, that are experiencing difficulties right now. Um, I attended, uh, Commissioner Fashi, I know you did as well, the Carlisle Chamber Annual Breakfast Meeting, and Jesse McCree presented a great, great job on some of the issues surrounding workforce, uh, in, in our county. And, um, I attended the Cretic, uh, legislators reception at the Capitol. Uh, was able to get in the ear of a number of folks about the nine-one-one funding. I'm not encouraged, but I, I believe it'll be reinstated for the dollar ninety-five. I think, I feel firm that that will happen, and thank goodness, that's six million dollars into our budget if, um, if it is, uh, reaffirmed. But, um, the, uh, the increase, I'm just uncertain about. Uh, I did attend a Costco ribbon cutting, and that was mayhem. And, uh, it was just amazing to see and so much energy and excitement surrounding that addition to Cumberland County. Um, I additionally, I attended the fifteenth annual Business Leaders Breakfast for Hampton Township. Uh, you know, that board has done an amazing job over the years. I know they're going to be experiencing some change. So I'll be curious if they continue to, um, update, you know, businesses and other elected officials on, on their actions in that same format. So we'll see. Um, I met with, uh, CCAP. They had a District Six meeting. It was lightly attended, but was able to, uh, meet the new, um, director for CCAP. Um, additionally, the big news is we held an election, and I just always like to thank everyone who participated in making that happen so efficiently. Um, I know Bethany and her team and countless volunteers, and I know Commissioner Fashi, you were out assisting. Uh, they do such an amazing job, and it's nice to have had that all, um, wrapped up.
You know, and when our, when our judges of elections, when, or judges of election, when they pull in, they are, they always have the best things to say. You know, no one is like, boy, this was a really long day and what a waste of my time. Like, they are true patriots for doing that work. They do such a nice job in, in every one of those polling locations, making sure that this county delivers a fair, accurate and reliable election. It is, they are very impressive people.
Yeah, it is a long day for them. Not only, it is a very long day, and they, they, but they all do an amazing job, and I appreciate that very much. I know we all do. Um, additionally, I attended the Marine Corps Ball. It was their two hundred and fiftieth celebration of the Marines. And I bring this up only to say that there were seven attendees that were recognized that were over the age of ninety-five. Um, and four of them were over the age of a hundred. And there was a gentleman who was dancing that was over the age of a hundred. So it is really an amazing thing to see, and I was really, uh, pleased to be a part of that celebration for these men who gave so much for the freedom of our country, men and women. There were women in attendance as well. Um, the, I, uh, yesterday, I did have the opportunity to. Um, the, I, uh, yesterday, I did have the opportunity to join with a group, uh, several from Cumberland County. Uh, to tour some data centers down in Northern Virginia. Um, and unlike uh, my colleague, we are not counting, is indicating, we are not counting on that revenue. Um, but if it should come, it was nice to get a timeline on what that would look like for us in our region. Um, those facilities will not be um, constructed if everything goes well. I don't believe they will be on the assessment rolls as of ten, twenty twenty-six. Uh, but it did bring up a really key uh, point, and I know Kirk Stoner is working on this, and we have work to do. Um, as these are the first in our county, how will these be assessed uh, as an item? They are not a warehouse. They are much more than that. Um, so that's an issue that this board may have to contend with in how exactly we look at assessing those. It was, um, it was very, it was a, it was really um, an interesting thing to see, and um. You know, it, uh, you know, it helped uh, you know, eliminate many of my concerns related to sound. They were almost silent, so. Um, you know, the road noise was more noticeable than the noise coming from this, that, those facilities, so. I look forward to this um, you know, discussion on how we um, approach these. If not this item in Middlesex Township. It will be somewhere within um, probably within our county, as it's a hot, hot topic across the board. And Kirk. To you and your planning team, thank you for doing such a great job in helping the municipalities be ready for this, for this eventuality almost. That's it for me. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, that takes us then to Commissioner Fashi.
Well, I, I didn't have any liaison assignments made, and that is very typical, and you know, some, sometimes in the cycle. And the library system did not meet. They, they did not have their October meeting, so I'll have more library updates, but I would remind you to use the Cumberland County Library System. Uh, Commissioner Meader and I, on Saturday, both attended the Commission for Women's. Um, they had a. Women's Resource Event. That was really great. We did it at two different times. So I know Commissioner Meader was out there in the morning. I was there in the afternoon. I thought it was really well done. There was lots of tremendous. Information for women, and that Commission for Women, they are on top of everything. Um, in fact, the woman who was there from the library. She said, this is just one of the nicest groups that's ever come and used this room. They are so smart, so thoughtful. Um, so I, I thought that that was, that, that was such excellent feedback for them, and really, Stacy, that's all I have.
Well, and Jean, the one thing I will add to that is, I had not been in that facility that is part of the library and mechanics.
Yes.
Library. It's a lovely facility, so um, I encourage folks to check it out.
Thank you. And that takes us to Commissioner Eichelberger.
Okay, just briefly, uh, next week we have flooded property. Uh, or that is rescheduled, so that will take place, will speak place. Um, let's see, we all, just a reminder to uh, aging is looking for. Uh, or appointees, so that there's some time before that action is uh, taken, but uh. They would like to get some folks on board, they're going to be committed to that, and any help we can give on that, recruiting some folks would be. I'm sure uh, appreciated by any of the advisory groups. The uh, Solid Waste Advisory Committee, it's not used to referring to the SWAC, but uh. Someday maybe we'll get there. They uh, met on November four, earlier this week, um, and. Uh, I did take note that Justin has provided the, I'd ask him for the draft minutes, make sure I got some specifics correct. And he circulated to all of us, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, I'm sure. He will have an opportunity. The one thing I did want to point out is there's a considerable amount of discussion regarding. Uh, battery management as a kind of new, uh, we take batteries now as part of household, household hazardous waste. Uh, but the disposal is pretty high uh, cost on that, so some other counties are having a lot of success with battery management, and uh. Our folks are looking into whether that might be a good fit for their function going forward. Uh, also, there was, they approved the motion for one-day paper shredding event in twenty twenty-six. And came up with a cost structure. It's outlined in, in the minutes, the first twenty-five pounds for free and then. Fifteen percent, fifteen cents per pound cost on top of that, wanted to make it accessible to. Uh, everybody, including a lot of seniors, so there's that three B uh, bunch upfront, and then anybody who substantial amounts, obviously, are going to pay more of their. Their share of the whole thing. Uh, also, probably the big thing coming out of that was this um, the Legislative Committee, the Professional Recyclers of Pennsylvania, problem. Uh, is advocating for Bill uh, twelve thirty-three, which will help ba- battery manufacturers in creating a statewide. Stewardship program for safe battery disposal. Um, that would be a take-back program similar to what we discussed years ago in regards to household electronics. Uh, with an attempt to get manufacturers to take a bigger role in that. So that bill has um. Uh, has the support of the, I believe the. Uh, I'm sorry, the SWAC itself is issuing a letter of support to that. They are going to be making a formal request to us as board commissioners to see if we would be willing to send an advocacy letter for House Bill twelve thirty-three. As well, so uh, we'll be hearing more about that uh, in the near future.
That's a very lengthy bill. I have it, and I'm going through it before that request comes to us, but it is, it is, I think it was, what, twenty-six pages? It's a, it's a lengthy bill. I'm hoping it's well thought out.
Senator Ross, Senator Rossman and some of his staff were in attendance at the event yesterday, uh, or the, the tour in Northern Virginia, and um, I asked his staff to take a look. Just make sure that we understand what the, if the legislature is going to support it.
Where the electronics, like the TVs, thing came apart was essentially that it wasn't that well-prepared, and there were a lot of contingencies that resulted in. The industry taking a pass on that, so that changed the entire shape of our recycling program. So, yeah, it's a, it's lengthy. Hopefully, it's thorough. And um, so we'll. Have to, maybe, Justin can brief us on it if we want to take that approach, or just read it to ourselves, and then a letter of support, truly appreciated. That's everything, man.
Thank you, commissioners. That takes us then to agenda item twenty-eight, which is report of executive sessions. We would like to report that an executive session is out on October thirty, twenty twenty. Regarding personnel. Now I'll ask if there is any other business to come before the board today. Here in Mansteinum, we are adjourned.